And we're live and recording, go ahead.
Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to our twice postponed city council meeting. So with that, I guess we'll, we'll get going.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach held Tuesday, August 11th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember DeLaurie. Councilmember Mandell. Councilmember Trastan.
Here.
Vice President McGinnis.
Okay, she's here, but we're not hearing her.
Okay, I think she's having an audio, an audio issue. President Bendo.
Present.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Donna Gaden and Corporation Council Simone Freeman would now have a salute to the flag.
Uh, Mr. Fraser, please lead us this week.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay.
Okay, so it's been an interesting couple of weeks to say the least. I hope everybody's getting back to as normal as possible. Given the swarm and the damage and obviously the cleanup is still ongoing. And power has been obviously an issue, but I hope everybody's getting back to as normal as possible. So with that, why don't we move on to the city manager report?
I, I believe Councilman DeLaurie wanted to make a statement first.
You want to do that first? Okay.
Thank you, President Bendo. Uh, City Manager Gaden, I just want to thank a few people. And they're broken down by crews, the emergency lifeguard crew and the auxiliary police. So for the lifeguard after hours crew, it's Dylan Raiden, Jacob Trustman, Francis Amy, Brianna Cantor, Sean Gillum, Ryan Troy, Karen and Lent, Francis Nico Pan, Teddy Reinhardt, Eileen de Barry, John Scooten and Chris Sullivan. These are people from 6:00 to 8:00 PM that are called on to cover the beach in case there's a rescue. In addition to that, the auxiliary police, uh, we have Captain Spar, Sergeant Anna and Charles Fatigati, Sergeant Hendricks, Sergeant Lupo, Corporal Rio, P.O. Elise, P.O. Landman Heard, P.O. Verity, P.O. Sullivan and then Commissioner Veracy. That's, that's in addition to everybody else that has been helping, but I just wanted to point those individuals out because of the delays in the council meetings that we've had to postpone. Thank you.
Okay, uh, well, I think we also then know, uh, some thanks to quite frankly, all the maintenance folks and well, pretty much everybody in the city for the cleanup after the, after the storm. I mean, um, uh, those guys, uh, those people put in a lot of hours removing trees and cleaning up the, the streets and getting the city back in shape. So they put in a heck of a lot of effort and they deserve our appreciation for that. So with that, why don't we now move on to the city manager report?
Uh, thank you. We're gonna start off my report with my department heads report. Um, first, uh, we're gonna give updates about the storm and we're gonna start with Commissioner Kimmons.
Scott, you're unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, Scott.
Evening. So we'll start with, uh, the storm came upon us. We were expecting it and we had meetings to prepare for it. Obviously we prepared both for flooding and for wind. Uh, we knew it would primarily be a wind event, but you know, we wanted to make sure our residents were safe from flooding. We opened up our emergency operations center early on the morning of, um, and at 6:00 AM, we manned it till, uh, later that evening. The OEM assisted in dealing with all the downed trees and coordinating efforts between the public works, the fire department, the police department. The fire department responded from 12:00 in the afternoon till 6:00 at night, 55 alarms in that six hour period. In the 24 hour period, they responded to 91 alarms. Majority of them were wires, transformers. We did have a lot of homes without power. Uh, dealing with PSCNG was another issue in itself that is still an ongoing matter. Uh, their lack or no communications, uh, is, was an issue during and even after the storm up until today. Uh, we still have a few places in town that do not have power. Uh, we've been working with, uh, Nassau County Emergency Management and PSCNG to try to get some of this rectified, to get some of our, our traffic lights back in service. But you know, like, uh, Council President Bendo said, the work staff, whether paid, volunteer, everybody was professional, everybody worked. And I traveled Nassau County on Thursday and driving through other towns saw trees still blocking streets. By the day after the storm, every one of our streets was passable and that is due to our hardworking guys from, uh, you know, beach maintenance and highway and sanitation. I think everybody really chipped in and did a yeoman's effort to really clean up Long Beach in a hurry. We did have a few buildings that sustained some structural damage, mostly roofing material, some roof structures. We had one detached garage totally by a tree. Uh, but all in all, I think we all made out very well compared to what could have happened. Any questions?
Your report, Scott?
Excuse me?
Does that complete your report?
Yes, unless anybody has any questions.
I, I think it's just worth, worth noting that 91 calls in 24 hours means the fire department was responding to a call every 15 and a half minutes for, for 24 hours straight.
Yeah, I, I mean, it was quite a long day. The guys, paid and volunteer, really stepped up. The volunteers manned the fire houses. And, uh, you know, everybody was out there doing what they needed to do to keep our residents safe.
Thank you. Tell everyone, thank you again.
And thank you. Um, the next person who's gonna speak is Mr. Tommy Cantor.
Tommy, you're unmuted, go ahead.
Okay, uh, good evening, everybody. Um, and thank you, uh, to the city manager and the city council and Mr. McNally for helping us and supplying us with all the material and everything we needed to deal with the storm and, and the aftermath. So thank you to you guys. It makes our job a lot easier. And as Commissioner Kim said, it was a crazy, crazy storm. We did have many meetings about it. Um, not gonna bore you with all of that. We were ready for it. We had 57 trees come down in the short period, I mean, that four and six hour period. We had everything prepared. All our machines were fueled up. We had chainsaws ready to go. So within 24 hours, we had all the streets open, like Scott said, for the emergency vehicles. But I want to thank my staff, all the men and women I have in the, uh, Long Beach Central Maintenance Department for stepping up, being there. They were on call. We, uh, we worked from the time that the first raindrop hit until about 2:00 AM and we were back at it again at 5:00 AM and we continued to, to continue to do it all week long. Um, everything else after the first 24 hour period, we had everything else done, which was basically, uh, if a tree's blocking a sidewalk or it's blocking somebody's driveway or something like that, we took care of all of that as well. Uh, we worked with the highway department, sanitation department. Thank you to those departments as well. You know, we're doing this a long time and no matter what storm hits, it just, when it, when it happens, we all work together and it works out. There's a lot of questions about, you know, falling off the trees in town. It seems like it's an early fall. The reason for that is the high winds, it burns the leaves, and then we had the saltwater intrusion on top of that. It's mostly the southern exposure, you know, because it's coming off the ocean. Um, it's, we're not gonna know what the deal is with the leaves coming back until next spring. That'll be the true test. But just because the leaves are falling off doesn't mean that the tree is dead and it's in danger of falling. We want to let everybody know that. We are gonna monitor everything. We do have a master plan that was provided by Public Works. As every tree and every species in the town, and we have a gentleman that's been working with the beach maintenance department for quite a while. He's a longtime resident, Kevin Colgan, and this guy literally knows the first tree that was planted in Long Beach, and I mean that literally. So we will stay on that, make sure that we, uh, we take care of everything that we have to do. We have a piece of equipment, it's our boom truck, it's out for service right now in inspection. When we get that back, we will continue to cut the dead branches that are overhanging the street and any of the tree limbs that are stuck up in the tree. Um, when we do this, the city will notify, the residents will do it by each street. Everybody will be notified so that you can move your cars and we can address any concerns that the residents may have. All of the time, and the material that we use, being that the governor did declare the state of emergency, we're tracking it all, like we do any storm. Um, I'm confident that we will be reimbursed as we usually do by FEMA. Uh, all of that information goes to the city manager, Mr. McNally, and we're tracking, like I said, every hour and every piece of equipment that we use. Going on to the boardwalk, we have, right now, we have the boardwalk, as we all know, the boardwalk is closed at night. For my staff, it's been working out amazing. There's a lot less mess in the morning to clean up. We're able to focus our efforts on other things. There's a lot less vandalism. And I have an overnight crew right now. We're able to replace the broken bench parts. We started at New York Avenue, we're heading east. We will get to all of the benches. If someone's bench is not repaired, we have more material coming. We will get to it before we finish. We're also able to make repairs to the decking where you see the boards sticking up. It's, as we all know, the boardwalk is used 24/7 in the summertime, so it's very difficult to, to do the work up there. But this, the boardwalk being closed is for me, to God's end. We have the power wash at different areas around the food stands. Uh, the beach, where everything's back to normal right now. We were able to, um, to clean everything up. We got rid of all the debris. We were able to clean the beach. You know, if you've been down here, you can see it. Uh, my staff's been out there, 5:00 o'clock in the morning, taking care of everything. The bathroom at New York Avenue and Neptune are both open. Um, thank you to John Morando and Joe Fabrizio for really pushing the contractor and getting them open. Uh, they saved us $30,000 in rental fees for the last month of the bathroom trails. We'll be removing those this week. So kudos to John and to Joe. Um, the beach mats you'll see have been removed. The, the Moby match, as we call them, with the high winds, a lot of them ripped, they were damaged, so we did take them out. The city manager, uh, ordered new mats immediately. They will be here, I believe, sometime before the end of the week. Um, so thank you for that. Uh, all the lifeguard chairs, you saw we might have taken out, you know, to prevent them from being washed away. They're all back in. Like I said, the beach is clean again, so that's back to normal in Long Beach. We ha, also have two items on the agenda tonight. This is the last thing for me. We have two, I think it's item number six. We have two machines that the machi, the city is gonna purchase for the Long Beach Central Maintenance Department. One is a wheel loader and one is a track loader. The wheel loader is the machine you see out there. It's better known as, uh, people know it more as a payloader. It's vital to what we do as far as prepping the beach, maintaining the beach. Um, any storm, we, we use that thing for 18 hours a day during this storm, any storm preparation, any storm cleanup, um, snow removal. It's in, this machine is, in the 365 day year, we use that machine probably 325 days of that year. Um, this machine is going to replace a machine that's outlived its life. But we're able to do work on the old machine and we're gonna put it into our recycling yard. So it'll be less, less, uh, we'll have to work a lot less and we'll probably get another five years out of it. The other machine, the track loader, that's a new purchase and the reason for that is behind the dune and the boardwalk, there's a maintenance lane. Well, so we were able to bring down the elevation after the army corps left. I spoke about this last time. We need that machine to get back there and to maintain that height and to clean up so it doesn't become overgrown and it doesn't affect that wave break wall, that, you know, that dark gray wall that you see under the boardwalk. This machine also is the same thing. It's used for everything we use the payloader for. We've rented one in the past. But working with, uh, Ena Resnick is our comptroller. She was able to do something with a purchase where it's a lot less money that we were paying for the rental and we'll own the machine. So thank you, Ena, and again, I just want to thank the city council. I want to thank, uh, I want to thank Donna and I want to thank John McNally for all that you guys have done. And, uh, the last thing I'll touch on is we're still at the recreation, working with the Commissioner Joe Brand. We just, uh, completed, we put new heaters in the locker room, which obviously we don't need now, the place is closed and it's not winter time. But it's, it's a pleasure to be able to do things in a, in a smart way, to do this stuff when it doesn't affect the residents. Last thing we want to do is close the building down to do work that we should be doing at the property time. So I can't thank Joe enough and, um, we're gonna be also working with acting police commissioner Phil Regona, doing a couple of things in the police department. We, right now, are gonna be putting new front doors in. Again, working in conjunction with Public Works. Uh, it's gonna be safer, it's gonna be better, it's gonna look nicer. And we're also doing something with their impound lot. We're gonna be putting up new fencing. Um, we're all working together. Like I said it last time and I'll say it again, in my 32 years, this is the best team that I've ever worked with and I'm proud to be part of it and I thank you very much. So everyone have a good evening. If you don't have any questions, I am gonna sit down and have dinner with my beautiful girl.
Enjoy your dinner. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Commissioner Morando, are you ready?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, John, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Okay, you can hear me then?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, just a, a quick follow-up on the storm stuff too. The people that you don't see that, uh, keep the water supply running and the wastewater moving out. Uh, we did have, uh, power outages by both the water plant and the wastewater plant, but, uh, our operators were able to work through it. At one point with the power down, we were down to three out of our heat wells, but we managed to continue to supply water and that's from the hard work of our water plant operators. Uh, Donna asked me to report tonight on the status of the retrofits for the lights on the boardwalk. And, uh, during a three-month period prior to the end of 2019, seven light fixtures along the boardwalk failed at the connection to the decorative pole and fell to the ground. There are 117 lights on the boardwalk. These fixtures were installed with the rebuilding of the boardwalk after Sandy in 2013. These fixtures had a five-year warranty and were supplied by Sternberg Lighting. We requested Wellsback our lighting contract to expect the remaining 110 lights as to their potential of failing. Wellsback inspected those 110 lights, uh, from January 23rd to January 31st and recommended and removed 45 fixtures they felt that potentially could fail and fall. This left us 65 operating light fixtures with the greatest concentration of lights missing between New York and Grand. We then had beach maintenance build protective barriers around the remaining 65 light fixtures in the event that any of them should fail to avoid any injury to, to any of the, of the public. We met with an expert from Magna Flood, a lighting manufacturer here on Long Island, who has provided us with other lights to determine why the fixture connections failed. They determined it was a design error that did not take into account the wood conditions on the boardwalk. Uh, they were too stiff and this caused the, uh, the material inside to wear and break away. Uh, they had seen a similar issue to this at the White Stone Bridge. After several meetings with Steinberg, uh, Steinberg agreed to have their engineers develop a retrofit kit to correct the design and supply us with 117 retrofit kits and they would pay our contractor, Wellsback, for the installation. The kit also included two lanyards that would prevent the feature, uh, the fixture from falling if the new connection were ever to fail. Prior to supplying the 117 kits, Wellsback reviewed the design and was not comfortable with the original design and Steinberg was asked to redevelop a new retrofit kit, which they did. Uh, there was an issue with installing the second lanyard because an existing pin which needed to be removed had welded over time to the fixture. The pin was made of stainless steel and the fixture was made of aluminum. Over time, they, they welded together. So it was determined each lanyard could hold 400 pounds and since the fixture weighed 60 pounds, Sternberg engineers determined a single lanyard would be sufficient. So on July 13th, we were finally able to get the kits and start the installation. So as of now, we have installed, reinstalled 29 retrofit kits in 27 of the light fixtures or approximately 25% of the lights now have retrofits on them. This equates to 92 light fixtures that are working, 79% of the lights on the boardwalk. As Wellsback finishes each, uh, each installation, beach maintenance is removing the protective fencing under the fixture. Each week, Wellsback provides DPW to complete the schedule, indicating which fixtures they have completed. And based on the, uh, the present rate, this project should be done by early November. If anybody has any questions?
This is Liz. I have a question. Um, are, are there floodlights up there? Did, did I hear you say that cor, did I hear that correctly?
No, no, these are lighting fixtures. The floodlight is a company, Magna Flood, that we use to, to look at this design from an outside.
I misunderstood. Thank you for the clarification.
And, and I think, the, the reason we started in New York and worked east is the most, the greatest concentration of lights were out there. And during the storm, in the height of the storm, I did go down and walk that section of the boardwalk to watch how the lights were reacting. And they were moving, but seemed to be, you know, holding steady and doing what they should be doing. Now that they have some movement in them, they won't wear the equipment out. They won't wear the fixture out and allow it to drop.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a question, uh, from Mr. Morando. Um, is there a guarantee on the new equipment and if so, for how long?
Well, the warranty on these lights expired about a year ago, so, uh, we were, I think we were fortunate to get Sternberg to actually live up to, uh, their reputation and replace the lights, but there is no, you know, further warranty on this going forward. The warranty on the original lights that originally want, you know, had originally expired.
Okay.
Are there any additional questions?
Uh, Commissioner, if you would, can you just talk about some of what we're doing with, uh, the lights that are right up against apartment buildings and might be, might be actually doing a little bit of light pollution towards those buildings?
Right, any lights, the original fixtures that we had up there when that became an issue, uh, the back half of the light facing the, the buildings was painted black, which allowed the light to just shine down to the boardwalk. So obviously with many of these fixtures having, of the 45 having to be replaced, they are not painted black on that inside. So, uh, the contractor will be painting them black as we go along and that will prevent the light pollution from hitting the buildings. And it'll show the same original light that we had when the boardwalk was finished and all the lights were painted that way.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Regona, you're up.
Good evening. Um, I'll just piggyback briefly in regards to what the commissioner said, which he pretended, pretended in regards to, uh, tropical storm, Eastside is. I do remiss, if I didn't say in my 34 years, I've never seen a better plan leading up to this potentially being a sand.
Sorry, Phil?
Yes?
Can you just move up a little bit, that, so we could hear you better? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Good now?
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so, living through Sandy and working through Sandy, um, I, I knew what was the potential devastation. I, I did most of the commissioners and superintendents, um, that work for the city. The city manager, the assistant to the city manager, Mr. McNally, the city council, all of you, had us together, all the department heads, days before. And we were planning, which is hugely important, that we were on the same page to know what we had to do. You kind of hope for the best, but you work and you anticipate the worst. Fortunately, the wind was the worst and we did have winds up to 70 miles an hour. Every department worked so closely together, which is the beauty and the uniqueness of the city of Long Beach. On my cell phone, I would call Superintendent Cantor up and said, I, I need more guys right now on country. We have trees that are down that are hazardous and they're going into a pole. And these guys would be there. It's something you don't get in a larger municipality. You don't, you don't really have that type of connection. And it, it was honestly wonderful to see. We were all here together. The police department, we were extremely busy also, as were every department. We handled, um, police member, I guess, we handled 81 calls in a very short period of time, in several hours. 81 calls for servicing in, in four or five hours. From everything from trees down, power lines down, some of the roofing blowing off. Um, we had a partial collapse of five in New York Avenue, which sounds worse than it is, but we did have a, uh, balcony and the stairs partially collapsed. Scapolder issues coming down, um, calls for help, aided cases, two water rescues that fortunately were not real rescues, thank God. So we didn't stop for that short period of time, along with all our colleagues in every department throughout the city. And I'm a big believer in teamwork and our teamwork really brought us together to, to make this big event really palatable and salvageable for the city, in my opinion. To move on, just a little about the police department. Post, uh, last week and, and the tropical storm, we've been extremely busy. We've put a few different things into place to try and assist our residents. This last weekend alone, um, we had 176 calls for service over the weekend from our residents. Um, we, just Sunday night alone, we affected three arrests of felony DWI, someone who's a credit hit, felony DWI operator of motor vehicle, which is again, something that is unfathomable, unfathomable to me that you're still doing that. And several domestic, uh, that they were arrested for assaults, et cetera. We put out two sergeants and two police officers on bicycle patrol, extra, a bomb beyond our usual staffing. And we had them in the west end, we had them on the boardwalk, we had them on the center of town, in the east end. What we do now is try and enhance the quality of life. And, and we go after the violations that really affect our residents. This weekend alone, we towed eight cars, we impounded, we wrote over 81 parking summonses. Our specials and our police officers wrote numerous municipal code violations, such violations as alcohol, uh, urinating in public, et cetera. Uh, our specials actually are up to 727 municipal code summonses in summer. Many times a year, I say this often, what are the specials doing? They're writing summonses. That's 727 summonses. And it's, it's all, they're all quoting the rights, some of the village. And not letting, the bicycles on the boardwalk in all hours, consumption of alcohol in the rent street. Um, they're out there doing it. We also have a beach patrol. Um, seven nights a week, I have two police officers that work the beach. Solely the beach. And two different range of vehicles, not actual police vehicles, it's the ranges, it's like golf carts. And they go east and west, back and forth, making sure the beach is clear after the 8 o'clock, 9:00 PM when we leave people off. And to make sure that there's nothing going on that shouldn't be going on, all the violations we talked about. Um, and that's every night of the week, we have them out there. For a while we didn't, and I couldn't quite understand. Um, but they're out there now and I think the message is loud and clear. If you're gonna come to Long Beach and you think you're gonna commit a violation like that, like if you get on a beach and you're gonna drink or you're gonna disturb other people or create antisocial acts, you're gonna get caught. It's not gonna be accepted. And I believe the message is out there now. Finally, the beach closing. Um, I think it's worked really well. Matter of fact, I know it's worked really well. People and residents, non-residents specifically, kind of get the message. 8 o'clock, the first week, it was a little difficult to get everybody to the beach. And a little bit, you know, apprehensive. Uh, we got them off. Now, they all tend to leave. When we come out, we're not allowed to speak and say, beach is closed, we'll face a $500 summoning if we're out here. It clears out pretty quickly. So at this point, I think we have the beach well under control. We have zero incidents of large groups gathering. Zero, which means the, you know, the city, we have the new hours, the modified hours of the beach and boardwalk, which is huge. Two weeks before, we implemented, we had almost a thousand people on the beach, creating absolute chaos. And it was a great idea and it's worked really well. That's it for me. Any questions?
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, the last person is Mr. McNally.
Thank you, Ms. Gaden.
I just wanted to give a few quick updates, but first and foremost, wanted to start with reiterating the commendations and thanks to all of the staff. It was an absolute pleasure, you know, and my honor to watch everybody come together and address the storm and serve our residents in the way that they did. You've heard about behind the scenes and in front of the scenes, I think our residents saw it very clearly, the dedication and skill that all of our people have. So again, on behalf of city manager Gaden and myself and the entire team, you know, thank you to all of our workers who are supremely dedicated to getting the job done for our residents. A quick update on the police commissioner interview process, which I know we've been talking about the past several meetings was coming down the pike. That is commencing as of this weekend and will take place, at least the first round of it will take place over the first couple of weekends. We have nine applicants for the position, several of which I will say have expressed confidentiality during, due to current jobs that they have. So the city is inclined to honor that confidentiality, so you won't hear us talking about who those folks are, but we have a good crop of candidates that we look forward to putting through a very rigorous interview process. Every week, the lifeguard, central maintenance, police department, and recreation department, along with the city manager's office, sit down and review our beach and boardwalk policies as they pertain to COVID restrictions and safety plans that we've put together to make sure that the health and safety of our residents comes first, especially during this COVID nineteen pandemic. We discuss things as, you know, Commissioner Rigona said, about closing the beach and boardwalks at eight o'clock and nine o'clock respectively. And I would like to reiterate, we've heard, you know, recently of some people asking us to reconsider that. I invite people to look back to where we were two or three weeks ago and how effective this has been. Not only have we not had large gatherings that were extremely disheartening to our residents and obviously completely unhealthy and unsafe in a COVID nineteen universe, but we've also had a real dip in the amount of people that have had to get pulled out of the ocean. Those two incidents were occurring simultaneously a few weeks back. So the efficacy of closing the beach at eight o'clock and the boardwalk at nine o'clock is really, can't be questioned at this stage of the game. As for non-residents on the beach, Friday through Sunday, we'll be discussing that tomorrow as well. But we really are in a situation where we saw, we tried our best to pull that off, to bring in additional revenue for the city so that, you know, residents wouldn't get hit with tax cuts or service declines. But it just becomes unmanageable without parking fields in play to restrict access to the city. We have families coming down at two o'clock in the afternoon that travel here from however far away, saying, we're ready to go onto the beach and we're having to turn around, families with small children or residents. And it was just, it became impossible to really maintain the fifty percent capacity threshold that is, you know, is thrust upon us by the state. So those two are very tricky, we're not really sure that there's going to be any changes, but we will also be discussing the biking restrictions that are currently in play only on Saturdays and Sundays, and anticipate having an announcement on that later on this week. The only other thing I really wanted to give an update on was in terms of COVID nineteen. Really, since the middle of July, we've been averaging somewhere between one and a half, one to one and a half cases per seven day period, or average daily seven day period for the, really the last like five weeks. So Long Beach is doing very well, we've flattened the curve, we're maintaining where we're at. So we'd encourage people to continue doing social distancing, wearing masks, washing hands, all the things that have become all too normal at this stage of the game. And as a last point, you know, these restrictions that are put in place because of COVID are not something that the city wants to be doing. But they are things that have become necessary to do. But the ancillary sort of side effects of that of our businesses, we're struggling during normal COVID hours without having visitors come on the weekends. They're struggling all that much more. So I want to reiterate to folks out there that our boardwalk is open seven days a week. Our beaches are open to visitors Monday through Thursday. Please come down to the city, frequent our restaurants and our bars and our local stores, they depend on these summer months. And this one in particular has been really brutal for them. And that's a call to our residents too, to keep in mind to shop local and support our local businesses, because this has been a really challenging time for them. So that's all I've got, city manager Gaden.
All right, thank you very much. What I have is very short, as you can see, we've all been working extremely hard, moving, trying, moving forward. We did, as Commissioner Rigona stated, we did have a before-storm meeting. And sometime this week, we're going to have an after-storm meeting. Even though everything works smooth, there are still lessons that we can learn. One of the things that we are doing is we are updating all of our emergency preparedness plans. So that would be for hurricane, tropical storms, flus, and for the flu and for pandemics. I want to remind the public that the city hall is open, but we are open at, for limited hours. We're open Monday through Friday from nine to eleven and two to four. Be prepared that when you come to city hall, your temperature will be taken and you will be asked approximately three questions and you will have to sign in and get a visitor's pass before you can proceed to the floor that you would like to go to. I think you've heard from several reports, from a portion of the team. And everybody knows that, I believe that we all work as a team. And so we will continue these department head reports for every meeting. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. I guess, you want to give us just a brief update on how we're doing with the census?
Well, we're still not over the, we need to be much higher. It's hovering about fifty-seven percent. And the biggest part from the takeaway is that it's no longer ending in October, it's ending at the end of September. So you'll, you're going to see a big push from the people that work with census. You may have knocks on your door, they will have the official ID. If you don't feel comfortable, you know, always just give city hall a call and let us know. But it's really important, it takes ten minutes. And it's ten years of funding for our roads, for our schools, for our programs. You know, I'm not going to be here in ten years, but the money needs to be here in ten years. So please, fill out your census. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, well, just remember, less funding from where has to get made up somewhere else. So.
My, mytwentytwencensus.gov, that's M Y twentytwencensus.gov.
Yeah, so please, please do return your census so we get our fair share of the funding, rather than it going to someone else that decided, the people decided to submit their census and when we didn't. All right, so with that, I guess we got no more reports, why don't we move on to the agenda?
Okay, first item is approval of minutes from prior meetings of July thirteenth, twenty twenty and July twenty-first, twenty twenty. Can I get a motion to approve? I'm sorry, who got that one?
Scott, you go first, I'll go second, thank you.
Voting Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trustin?
Yes.
President McGuinness?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Okay, item two is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and enter into a community development block grant subrecipient agreement between the city of Long Beach and the county of Nassau and to amend the city's budget.
Okay, I believe we have someone that's going to speak on this.
That's Patty, Patty Born.
Ms. Born?
Hey Patty, you're unmuted, go ahead.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Since May, I've taken over responsibility for the community development program. And our goals are to move the projects forward, to use our funds for current priorities. For example, there was mentioned tonight, the Mobi mats, we've been able to pay for those, the new Mobi bats. We just got reimbursement for the fifth floor ADA bathrooms in city hall, which we did by transferring funds that you had approved. So we wanted to make sure we use the funds that we get efficiently and for our priorities. We're working closely with the city manager and with John McNally and the department heads on these priorities. So we have two resolutions on tonight. The first is for transit oriented development. The county using their community development funds decided last year to put out a competitive grant process. And we applied, they told us we got a great application and were given a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The funds are to help with improvements in the area surrounding the Long Island Railroad Station from J.J. Evans Boulevard West to National Boulevard. People have told us, told the community over time, that they had concerns in the area about safety, health issues, bicycle parking, lack of pedestrian support, that the area at Kennedy Plaza is underutilized and could be used better. So we applied for funds and we hope these funds will improve the area, support our business community, connect up with the communities to the north, the low and moderate income communities to the north of Park Avenue, and also support the people that come to town and residents who use our beach park. Senator Kaminsky has always been very supportive of our grants, as well as legislative board has been for the county community development grants. But Senator Kaminsky took a major step regarding the train station. And the railroad has told us that due to his efforts, they have included the Long Island Railroad Station in Long Beach in the next capital plan, the next MTA Long Island Railroad Capital Plan. And that means that the MTA Long Island Railroad has set aside funds in their capital plan to refurbish the station, because it's theirs, the building and the tracks and the area surrounding it. So this is a perfect time to get these funds from the county to the city so that we can work in tandem with the railroad to efficiently make the area productive for our residents. And we look forward to doing that. In preparation for the submission of this application, we did some field work, we went out and talked to commuters, we talked to pedestrians, bicyclists, we talked to folks from North Park, the business community, those who use Kennedy Plaza currently, such as the farmer's market folks and the Arts and Plaza, and got their ideas so that they helped us provide input into the application, as well as of course, the city staff, which talked about their priorities as well. So based upon this, we hope to use the funds and hopefully get additional in the future, but to use these funds to provide new and repainted crosswalks for safety, new curb cuts, to provide a wayfinding signage to help people get from the bus station to the train, to city hall, to the beach, because we really don't have great signage right now in the area. To provide enhanced bicycle visibility and protection, to provide better bicycle parking, to connect up better between the train and our bus. We call it a multimodal center, because we have the parking, we have the trains, we have the bus lines, and we have the bicycle parking and pedestrians. So we want to make this efficient for everyone so that the area can be used efficiently. And we, so we'll have better informational, probably kiosks to provide information, better lighting, and make it very efficient for people. So for whatever reason, they're in that area on the north side of Park Avenue, they will find it effective and useful. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we got any?
I just got one question, Patty Born?
Yes, hi.
Hi, it's Mike Delory. You had mentioned there'll be improved lighting and why I'm asking is specifically around the bike rack area. There just seems to be, will that include better lighting? And I think you mentioned crosswalks, I noticed some of the crosswalks seem to have been started in the central business district, which I'm very happy to see, by the way.
Yes, lighting is very important, especially as we get towards the winter months when the days are shorter. And crosswalks, yes, very important on Park Avenue, as well as we've noticed on National. When the children go back to school, many of them are dropped off on National Boulevard by the buses. And the interaction between the cars, the bicycles, and the children getting dropped off and pedestrians in general, there's real conflicts there. We've talked to the police about it in the past and we want to see improvements there. I forgot to mention too, that even though we've done field work and talked to folks, we'll be coming back to speak to all of you and our residents and commuters when the project starts to get their input.
Thank you.
Hi Patty, this is Karen. Can you tell us how much the grant is that Mr. Kaminsky, Senator Kaminsky was able to secure?
That's a good question. All I was told in a public announcement by the railroad, by thanking the senator for his efforts on behalf of Long Beach and, you know, our system, is that they're going to do refurbishment. It's in the next capital plan and we've been in several discussions with the railroad folks about this. So as soon as the funds are available, we will let you know how much they expect to spend. We hope it's a lot of money, because the station could use it.
Sure could. Okay, thank you.
Oh yeah, hi Liz, hi Liz. Hi Patty, this is Liz. Do we have, I just, first I just wanted to thank everyone that participated in writing that grant, including other nonprofits, Long Island Streets, and Ryan McTiernan, when he was here. We really, they really worked hard on making efforts to get that along with your department. Do we have, is there any type of timeframe on this, do you know?
That's a good question, thank you, and thank you for the support. The, once this resolution is passed by the city council and our city manager signs the contract, the county will take it up through their process, it has to be approved by the Nassau County Legislature still, and be routed through the county routing process. So they estimate three to four months, unfortunately. Hope it's less, but with COVID and they don't, you know, meet as much. So we would hope to start this in the fall with, this first phase would be to meet with the community and select some kind of design firm to help us use the money wisely.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from the council? Okay, did we get any questions from the public on this?
Yes, Roy Lester asked, what is the Transit Oriented Development Project, Complete Streets Initiative, improvements surrounding the Long Beach Long Island Railroad train station? With specifics, and what is the hundred and fifty thousand dollars spent on, with specifics, please? So I guess this is an opportunity to state anything that you may have missed or want to go back to, Patty.
Thank you, John. Complete Streets was legislation passed by the city as one of the first communities on Long Island. And the nexus of that, which is tied into with transit oriented development, is that we plan and we are committed to developing any roadway improvements, not just looking at the needs of drivers and the cars and the trucks, but just as important, or even more so, are pedestrian and bicyclists. And the idea is to look for safe streets that work efficiently to move people where they need to go. And transit oriented development is a concept that's become popular in the last five, maybe ten years. The idea being to develop appropriate economic development projects around train stations, because they provide so much, that's transit, they provide so much functions and make it more effective to have development around there. So we expect that, as I said before, this not only will help the people using the train station in city hall and the whole area, but it'll be a boost for our business community as well, and for any potential development in the future in the whole area.
That was the last question on that agenda item.
Okay, great, thank you, then let's move on to item three.
Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and enter into a community development block grant coronavirus subrecipient agreement between the city of Long Beach and the county of Nassau and to amend the city's budget.
I'm assuming this is going to be Patty again?
Hi again. So yes, this is another competitive application, this is an addition. This is in addition, both of these applications tonight are funds in addition to our annual allocation from the county of community development block grant funds. So I'm happy to say that we were awarded a significant grant. This is under the Federal Cares Act, which provided funding for COVID-related issues. So this was funds available to HUD, which provided them to the county, and it was a little challenging to apply because HUD had to do it so quickly because they wanted to get the funds out, that they never had anything in writing for us to use as a guide for what we were supposed to apply for. So we really had to rework the application several times. We did apply for a larger amount of money because besides doing programs for the city, we thought we would ask for support for our business community, for administrative costs, and we had applications to submit for some of our nonprofits for social services. Unfortunately, the way the county decided to allocate the funds, we received the key funds that we need for the city in items number two and three, but not the other funds, and the county allocated it to county-wide agencies. That's the way they decided to use a lot of the funds. So there are three parts to the application. The first part is the library, our Long Beach Public Library, applied for $10,000 and they proposed to use these funds for an employment training program for those residents who lost their jobs due to the COVID. They're going to have workshops followed by expert one-on-one assistance, and it'll all be held virtually and, which the library has built up quite a reputation in virtual programming. The number of beneficiaries for this program is about 300, and that's $10,000. The second program for the city, which was something that we designed with the police department and beach park staff, is almost $24,000 for what we call social distance ambassadors and to enhance our special police, who are so important right now at the beach and on the boardwalk. And it will pay for employing 10 income-eligible, because this is community development block grant program, funds for low and moderate income folks. So employ 10 young people to work on the boardwalk and the beach on social distancing, as we call them ambassadors, and, you know, to encourage social distancing, wearing of masks. They will also help to direct folks to open beaches when beaches, if they have to be closed, so that they get addressed and directed to the beaches that are available for them. And we think this program will not only provide assistance to the city at this time when we need it, but also help to train some young people, give them an opportunity to work as special police. The third program is upgrades to our community centers for building health and safety purposes, and that's $65,000. Again, working with city staff, we applied for funds for our three community centers, the recreation center, the ice arena, and the MLK Junior Center. We could not apply, unfortunately, for funds for City Hall for this purpose because under HUD regulations, it was not allowable. But we tried, but we couldn't get the funds. And it's going to protect our employees, public employees, and our residents who come to these buildings. And it will pay for such things, some things that, the money goes back to March, so it could be things that have already been installed by Tommy Kanner and his staff, and includes such things as protective barriers, sneeze guards, signage, masks, and hand sanitizers stations. So the funds can be used for upgrades now and in the future because the money's available for about the next year. So this should help support the city's efforts and save the city money and move forward with health and safety issues. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. The social distance ambassadors, is that money to cover just through the end of the beach season or will it extend beyond Labor Day when the lifeguards and such are off?
Yes, it can extend beyond Labor Day, yes.
Okay, so if we still have crowds coming down, they would still be there?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the council? Okay, any questions from the public on this one?
There are two, one from Roy Lester and one from Eileen Heschin, so I will read them in that order because I think they're, they overlap with each other, so I'll just have them go at the same time and see if there's any unanswered elements of it. From Roy, it's who are the social distance ambassadors and what is their pay rate and where can they be found and what was the criteria to be hired as one? Also, what are the PFNI city building, health and safety upgrades specifically, and how specifically is the money going to be spent? From Eileen, it overlaps, I think, with the first part of Roy's question, has there been, oh, sorry, have they already been hired? How would I recognize one? How many salaries are included? How many ambassadors are there and what is their hourly pay?
Okay, thank you, John. I hope I catch everything, if not, I wrote as fast as I could because there's a lot there. So, as we discussed, we call them social distancing ambassadors, but they will be the same titles and could be the same special police that we already know and we're so proud of and do such a great job for us. So essentially, they have a title for the grant, but they are special police officers. They will be paid at whatever salaries our current special police are paid based upon, I'm sure, experience and requirements for the job. And that will be something that will be directed by our recreation department director Joe Brand in coordination with the police commissioner, Phil Regona. And they will work at the beach, they will work on the boardwalk and assist and be directed by our commissioners and department directors to do whatever is necessary to fulfill the requirements. Did I answer everything?
I think you had already gone through the part about the PFNI, so that was probably asked and answered. Did you say how many were being hired? You did, correct?
10. I said, earlier I said 10. It's projected we could hire 10 young people and they would work about 14 hours a week at the pay rates directed by the beach park director. And they would do it for about eight weeks, but it could vary because I know we're starting late. So as President Bendo said, it could easily move into September, depending on.
Yeah, and I know if Commissioner Regona was still on, he would, he would add, I think emphatically, that going through the special police program that we have here gives these, give these young people a real leg up that are looking to go into the criminal justice system and that if they successfully make it through his training, you know, and become solid special officers, that it really, you know, it gives them, as I said before, not to be redundant, but a true leg up on other competitors. So it's an extremely viable career path, obviously, and this is a tremendous entry way onto that career path.
And John, thank you, because I think another question was, how are the, what's the criteria for hiring? So as you said, the criteria is the same criteria for the special police. They have to meet whatever requirements are currently for special police.
Okay, thank you. And I guess that was it for the questions from the public?
On that item, yes, sir.
Okay, then let's move on to item four.
Item four is a resolution revising resolution number 4720 to add certain specific language.
Okay, I'm going to assume that's Mr. Morando?
That is correct.
Hang one moment. John, you're muted.
Okay, when the council passed the last resolution to adopt the local solid waste management plan for the next 10 years, we submitted that resolution and the plan to the New York State DEC. Lo and behold, they came back and they wanted some additional wording in the resolution in order to approve the plan. So we, their wording added it to the resolution and so that we could submit the plan and have their final approval.
Okay, are there any questions from the council members? All right, here are none. Did we get any questions from the public? John, did we get any questions from the public on item four?
I apologize, no, we did not.
Okay, no problem. Okay, here are none, then let's move on to item five.
Item five is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the 2020-2021 fiscal year.
Okay, I guess our city manager?
Yes, those funds are for the police secretary. Part of her salary, which we'll probably get the next one, comes out of my budget and then we took the rest from the contingencies. That was a position that was definitely needed in the police department.
Okay, so just.
What we did was, we did not change the budget, the bottom line of the budget. So I don't want anybody to think that we added that to the budget.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to point out. We're not increasing spending, we're just moving it to where it's actually going to be spent.
Yes.
Okay, any questions from the council?
Yes, I have a question about where is the funds for the payroll taxes for this person? How much are the benefits for this person per year and where are they in the budget?
The payroll taxes, where they will be, we had money, this is the only thing we needed. So they're already in the police department, in the police department budget, this is all we needed, the additional was $50,000.
Total, okay.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Did we get any questions from the public?
Yes, two again, one from Roy Lester and one from Eileen Heschin. I will go in the opposite order this time, to be fair, starting with Eileen. Has there been a new hire? Why is this $50,000 needed? And then Roy asked along the same lines, what caused the city to need $50,000 more in police salaries?
And it was the hiring of the secretary. And the money came from within the budget, we just moved money around.
Okay. And was that it, those two questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then on to item six.
Item six is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a Caterpillar 299D2 XPS compact track loader and a Caterpillar 962MBR wheel loader under New York State contract.
All right, so Tommy Kanner told us, explained this before he ran off to have dinner with his lovely girlfriend. So Donna, we got anything to add or Tommy kind of covered everything?
Hey, Tommy covered everything.
Any questions from the council? Right, we get any questions from the public?
There were none.
Okay, then on to item seven.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing publication of notice of public hearing and of application to waive all street parking requirements for premise 901 West Beach Street street floor for a skincare and home goods retail store. This item is for publication only, hearing will be held August 18th at 7:00 PM. Now on to the voting.
Okay.
Item number two, because we already voted on item one. Item two is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and enter into a community development block grant subrecipient agreement between the city of Long Beach and the county of Nassau and to amend the city's budget. Who wants to introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and enter into a community development block grant coronavirus subrecipient agreement between the city of Long Beach and the county of Nassau and to amend the city's budget. Who wants to introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Scott, one more time?
Still yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Trastan?
Yes.
Yes.
Item four is a resolution revising resolution number 40, excuse me, 4720 to add certain specific language. Who wants to introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Item five is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. Who wants to introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan?
Yes, and can someone just stop shuffling their papers? There's a lot of background noise for some reason. Thank you.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Item five is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. Who wants to introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
No.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Item six is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a Caterpillar 299D2 XPS compact track loader and a Caterpillar 962MBR wheel loader under New York State contract. Who wants to introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
No.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Item six is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a Caterpillar 299D2 XPS compact track loader and a Caterpillar 962MBR wheel loader under New York State contract. Who wants to introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
And finally, item seven is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive all street parking requirements for premise 901 West Beach Street street floor for a skincare and home goods retail store. Who wants to introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
And finally, item seven is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive all street parking requirements for premise 901 West Beach Street street floor for a skincare and home goods retail store. Who wants to introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Do you make a motion to close meeting?
Well.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Do you make a motion to close meeting?
Well.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Do you make a motion to close meeting?
Well.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell?
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan?
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis?
Yes.
President Bendo?
Yes.
Okay, Good and Welfare. The answers to the Good and Welfare questions from the previous meeting have been posted, so they're all up for everyone to see. I'm assuming we've got questions for this week, so I'll let Mr. McNally take it away.
Sure. If I could, first, if you don't mind, mainly because I don't mess around with our chief lifeguard Gillespie, you pinned me into the sand. If I forgot the agenda item, I noted earlier that we're having a beach meeting tomorrow and one of the agenda items that he wanted to raise was the conflict that we're currently seeing between short-caste fishing going on during bathing hours. Not only is there some indication that that might be partially responsible for a lot of the shark sightings that we are seeing, the fishermen frequently chum either late at night, early in the morning, or while they are fishing, and attract the bait fish and then the bait fish obviously attract the sharks. But we've also had a number of instances where small children and even adults have been snagged by, you know, hooks that have come off of lines and elsewhere. So that is going to be another agenda item as part of tomorrow morning's beach meeting. So I did not want to neglect Chief Gillespie's agenda item because I'm afraid of him. Seriously, so, so there's that. But yeah, there was, we intended to get the Good and Welfare questions from the last meeting up earlier, but there was more than 75 such questions, so that did not get up until today. Our apologies, we dealt with a tropical storm in the middle of it as well, but that was an unusually excessively large number of questions compared to what we're used to. So our apologies out to all of those that asked questions, but they are up there now on the city's website. If you go to the city council, city council meetings, and then 2020 proceedings, it's listed at the bottom of that page because it works in reverse chronological order. So those that have submitted Good and Welfare questions for today's meeting are, their names are, or they go by, Non-Quick Pro Quo, Long Beach Secrets, Ed Smith, Joanna Mosensen, Terry B., Stacy Weinberg, Robert Marks, Helen Maylie, Robert Simins- Robert Saminsky, Robin Donovan, Teresa Paggy, Lisa Santinos, Albert Albuquerque, Carlo M. Fusco, apologies if I mess that up, and Roy Lester. So we have your questions, we see you, we hear you, we will have your answers or replies posted in advance of the next meeting.
Okay, so with that, I guess, thank you, everyone, for joining us, and we got a short stint until the next meeting, since this is a postponed meeting from earlier this month. So we'll be back a week from, week from this evening, so we will see you then, and.
Also, as a reminder, we have the work session at 6:00 PM on Thursday.
Thank you, thank you, that's true. The city council will be having a work session, a public work session, Thursday at 6:00. So information for that, for streaming for that, will be posted.
It is currently posted on the city council page.
And there you go. Dave's ahead of it. So, so we'll see some of you Thursday, and then again next Tuesday. So enjoy the, enjoy the week, and have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you, good night, be safe.
Good night.